meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present tonight. Votes this evening will be using our electronic voting system. At this time, the city council will convene to consider public matters. I wish, if you wish to speak, please fill out a blue speaker card and provide it to the city clerk over here, and if you wish to submit any written materials, please provide them to the city clerk and they will distribute them to the city council. As required by state law, when speaking on an item listed on the agenda, your comments to, limit your comments to three, um, limit your comments to the subject that on the item. If you wish to speak on a subject not listed on the agenda, you may speak under public comments portion of the meeting. Finally, please address the comments to the city council. Staff only responds to questions from the city council, not to public speakers. And I'd like to invite Dave Evans from Grace Community Church to bless our city and ask for God's blessing upon this world as we so much need prayer right now. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Good evening, and let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for our city and for the members of our city council, our city manager, and for the other representatives who are here tonight and for the work they and the rest of the staff do for our community. Thank you for our chief of police services, Captain David Pults, and our sheriff's deputies who protect us and enforce our laws. Please keep them safe and give them patience, especially when they encounter difficult and challenging situations. And thank you for Brownie and Junior Troop Twenty-Five Thirty-Two, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag, and for those members of our community who will speak, and for all others who are here this evening. God, please give wisdom and understanding to our city council and representatives as they review and make decisions on the various contractual and other agenda items this evening. Help them to make prudent and wise decisions. Please guide them and direct them in future business and civic matters, and enable them to work together as they strive to determine and do what is necessary and beneficial for our city. May they listen and understand comments made by the public speakers tonight and respond appropriately. I pray in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Evans. And that brings us to the pledge of allegiance. We have some special guests, and I think they're Brownies Junior Troop Twenty-Five Thirty-Two.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, girls, if you could come up to the stage and get a picture with all of us. I hope you brought your Girl Scout cookies to, for us. So, girls, we all love Girl Scout cookies. Are we done selling them for this year? Where do you guys have your meetings at? Okay. Well, so, we want to thank you for coming and saying the pledge of allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom, the American flag. Thank you so much. It's so important to us to start every council meeting, especially when we have guests like you to come and present the pledge of allegiance for us. So, thank you so much, and let's get a picture. So, that brings us to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please fill out the blue speaker card and give it to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. If you leave your contact information, staff will contact you to address the issues that you raised here at the council meeting. When you're called to speak, come to the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the green light is on. The green light will remain on for two minutes. When the light changes from green to yellow, speakers will have one minute to conclude their comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, conclude your thoughts and return to your seat. A timer will not be displayed on the screen. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one general public commenter, and that is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. Today is June seventeenth. Next week will be June twenty-seventh, and that'll be a two-year anniversary when Benjamin Yu was arrested the first time for domestic violence. He's made fifty-four court appearances and has yet entered a plea, and the victims have not had their day in court. Shame on you, Councilman Yu. Not only did you break the ethics pledge that you signed as a city councilman, you broke the pledge to women all around the country. Wasn't it a year ago that you invited the Iranian community to come to the city council? Not once, but twice, because we have to help their community. And then this is what you do, and then you get rearrested in February, the following February, for the same charge of domestic violence. This time escalated to a felony. And then recently, you wanted to make yourself look good in front of the community by doing proclamations to the Jewish community, to the Asian-American communities. Oh, I'm gonna do these proclamations. Look at me. I'm Benjamin Yu. What a great guy. But fifty-four appearances, and you can't say what your plea's gonna be? And your next court appearance is July twenty-second. And can you explain to me why it's in a military diversion court? Why are you going to a military diversion court? This has nothing to do with the military. You did something to a female, not once, but twice. Was she in the military? Was she on military property? I don't think so. They both happened in the city of Lake Forest. So, is this your strategy, or is it the strategy of your council grant, Ben Court, to go this direction? You really are a mystery man to me, because out there in the parking lot is your BMW M4 convertible. I'm a BMW enthusiast since nineteen eighty-six. My car is parked out there as well. But I sure as hell can be driving an M4 convertible, high-performance engine, all made a hundred percent German. You're Mr. American? Why didn't you buy an American sports car? And look at it, you even got the top down tonight. Wow, really suave. You really are something. You think you're Mr. Cool, you know? I'm gonna show up to city council, me, my BMW, my convertible, and you have a DMV placard for disability? I see you walk around here. I don't see a physical disability. I see you on the council. I don't see a mental disability. You're the mystery man. Family time resorts, Omni Investments, you are just the mystery man. And I hope on July twenty-second, you finally enter a plea. Thank you.
Mayor?
You may.
Can I make a comment?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, nobody knows what car I drive. It's such a freedom of expression, unless somebody disclosed it. And the second, I do not drive a car with a DP license plate. I drive a car with a DV license plate, Disabled Veteran. Based on the California DMV website, it says, if you are a disabled veteran with a qualifying disability, you may be eligible for a DV license plate. Thank you for your comment.
Do we have any other public comments?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. That brings us to consent calendar. All matters listed in the city council consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, there has been requests to remove two, three, four, and fourteen.
Two, three, four, and fourteen. All right, we'll have a motion for the remainder.
I'll move the remainder.
Okay, we'll vote on the remainder. Please cast your votes.
And that motion passes.
Item number two.
So, for item number two, that is minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on June three, twenty twenty-five, and our public commenter is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. You are the mystery man, because I've asked for your DD two fourteen, and why don't you explain to us what the disability you incurred while you were in the military? But you're the mystery man. I want to talk about it. Voits has a comment on it, but I don't say it, but it's pretty interesting. So, what you've done is, uh, you're really something, dude. You're really, really something. But, you know, your wife left you and all that, so who cares? Anyways, minutes of regular council meeting, I'd like to go back and talk about this contract at Gold Star Technology. Mayor, I've put in a request to come to the campus to see in an action, and nobody's followed up with me. Can you follow up with somebody to make sure I have access to see one of these video conferences in action, Mayor? Can you do that? Transparency, folks, it's written all over. We just spent a quarter million dollars in video conference. My taxes paid for it. I want to see in action, and these five are blocking it. And they talk about transparency? Can't make it up. So, there was a change order for twenty thousand dollars that I asked the city manager about, and I put a public records request in, and sure enough, I got it. And to me, this should have been the scope of work, city manager. These things here, Numex five GPS USB C extender over CAT seven six eight slash seven, they charge us six thousand dollars. That should have been the original scope of work. Your staff sends in the report, we worked good, we collaborated, we did everything good. So, why are we getting six thousand? Thirteen thousand dollars for firm fixed price services? Almost fourteen thousand? Why are we paying that, for city manager? They're coming back, and they want fourteen thousand more for firm fixed price services. I tell you, she can't negotiate contracts. She gets rolled on every contract. There's a contract, and they come back, and she spends, she signs off it. This case, it's twenty thousand. Here's a telephone list of all the different departments. I counted eight departments. Why did we order thirteen conference videos? And do you guys need to use them all at the same time? I don't think so. This ain't the FBI. This ain't the CIA headquarters. This is a little old Lake Forest that you guys don't do a whole lot. But for some reason, you guys ordered thirteen of them at almost three hundred thousand dollars, and I doubt they're used eight hours a day. But you guys just want to get another toy, and I want to see in action, but I guess I won't, because it'll make it look even worse. But transparency's on our website, right, Mayor? She wants to see everything. You spend it, should be able to see it, but you're blocking it. Shame on you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Item number three.
Yes, the title of item number three is certification of warrant register, and our public commenter is Andrew O'Connor.
The warrant register, ladies and gentlemen, is our city checkbook. This is where we write your checks out, I think bi-monthly to different vendors. And I go through, and I look at it like, why are we spending this, and what are we getting for this? And I pull public records requests, and I get, like I just did, this twenty thousand dollars. Okay, I pulled that, and I got it. And I shown, we paid twenty thousand dollars. It should have been the original contract. So, let's see what's in the checking account this month. Oh, my favorite lobbyist, Joe's Ace Gonzalez and Son, seventy-five hundred dollars. I've asked once, I've asked twice, this is my third time. What's he doing for a city manager up in Sacramento? What's he doing for seventy-five hundred? Times three. So far, we spent twenty-five thousand with this guy. I don't know what the hell he's doing. Do you? Kidder Matthews, forty-six thousand, five hundred, twenty-five dollars to take care of this complex. Our electric bill was seventeen thousand, two hundred for this complex in April. In April. Do you know how much expense it's gonna be in August, September? Those two, those conference centers sit empty all the time. And this building here, it's empty. There's nobody in here, but we're spending almost all this money. Brightview, eight thousand dollars a month for landscaping for this complex. It adds up, folks. Best Besen Krieger, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. A hundred and thirty, what did we do in attorney fees that costs us a hundred and thirty-two thousand one month? Do you know their, uh, Miss Wynn? You're sitting over there, you should. Ralph Anderson, thirty-three thousand dollars compensation study. Look, the guy's already made the template. Okay, for him to come back and look at sixty employees is real easy, but he's charging us full price. Thirty-three thousand dollars just to do a quick overevo of sixty employees? That's ridiculous. It's just, we're just spending too much money. And we're gonna, I'll talk later about the Crown facility for the civic center, but that costs us thirty-five thousand dollars a month for janitorial service. You multiply that times twelve, all these things. Do you know we're spending one million dollars a month for this facility? One million dollars a month we pay just to get this thing going. It's like your house. You pay your mortgage, your home insurance, all that sort of stuff. Our night is one million to build this thing. And you guys don't even look at it. You don't even ask her. Why the five of you looking at me should be looking at her and ask her, why do we pay thirty-three thousand dollars?
If you can conclude your comments. And that brings us to item number four.
Yes, Mayor, item number four is the adoption of the twenty twenty-five local responsibility area fire hazard severity zones map, and we do have two public comment. First public commenter is Andrew O'Connor.
So, after last month's, or last council meeting, I walked out here just dumbfounded. I watched the video five times, and, uh, but I want to give a shout out to Dana Silva, the forty-seven minute mark, for all the work that she's doing for her community. You know, Mr. Servi, she should be embarrassed, because she spun circles around you. She's doing things that she should be doing. She has more answers what's going up there than you do, sir. You should feel embarrassed. You, you know, you get up there, and you do all your great talking, all that, but the questions you were asking, you should have already had answered. You don't know that SEC or Southern California Edison has their lines buried underground? You lived in Portola Hill for how many years? It's a modern community. All their lines are built underground. You're still wondering about that? And then you said you, you know anything about, uh, the Alert California, know nothing about that? Well, why don't you? Why did you have to ask the fire chief about it? And he had to say, why don't you call Brian Norton? Well, why didn't you do that, sir? Because it's the same issue I've had with you for years. You're not engaged. You come out with this big thing, I'm Doug Servo, there's all this talk, and of course, you're gonna use the word weaponization as soon as I walk away from this. But once again, go watch the video. You're gonna fool yourself. And then you are gonna have a pop-up meeting in your neighborhood. Really? In your neighborhood, not Portola Hills, but in your neighborhood. How long are I gonna ask you to have a city council meeting or an event for Foothill Ranch? We're a stepchild. You don't care about us. You don't do anything about us. And like there, yeah, I'm gonna have a pop-up meeting for my neighborhood. What about Foothill Ranch? And the two thousand homes that are down here? You have not once done anything for Foothill Ranch. Quit treating us like a stepchild. So, I had to go out and find my own stuff, because I have no confidence in this council. And I've sent you pictures that you have of the brush that you said the county's supposed to take care of, and you can view it yourself, Mayor. And you said you would take care of it, and nothing's been taken care of. The pictures are there. Do something. You're supposed to be the right-hand man at Don Wagner in Tannemar. You're on the fire port, a water guy. You guys are not prepared for fire season that starts in October. You're just talking around in circles. And then you talk to her, and she comes up with some wort salad. Oh, yeah, well, that the county's gotta take care of that. Oh, that's great, city manager. Push it back to the county. Problem is, we are inferno up there, but you don't care, because you live in Garden Grove. When you pull out to here and get on the freeway and go north, you could care less. At least when Bob Dunick was the city manager, he lived in South County. He was attuned to it. But you, huh, you're in North County. You could get...
If you could conclude your comments, that'll bring us to item number fourteen.
Mayor, may I have a moment, please?
Yes, you may.
Um, just for the folks who are watching and hear, just to correct the misinformation that was just presented, talking about how much I've been involved with Dana Silva, meeting with their group, I've had interactions with Kelly Lee from Southern California Edison over the years. I participate in a monthly conference call on the severity maps. So, the information that, uh, the previous speaker was just talking about is, is false and misinformation, and again, part of his track record and how he likes to insinuate, uh, different things about different council members, not knowing exactly what the truth is. So, I just wanted to counter that and let you know that the information that he's providing and saying that I should be embarrassed is totally false, and the fact that I didn't say the things that he said. So, it's on the record, and I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome.
Uh, Mayor, can I add one more comment here?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Yu.
It's a great country. You have freedom of speech. You can come here, say whatever you want, but I hope you refrain from commenting on my family members, especially minors, and they are both private citizens. Okay, thank you very much.
That brings us to item number fourteen.
Apologies, Mayor, we do have one more speaker for item number four.
Okay, or item number, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that is Marcel Louis XIV.
Last meeting, we talked about the new fire map that's out there. Um, someone was gonna get back at me. Hasn't happened. I'm a little disappointed that nobody on the council asked the right question. You ask about, oh, yeah, Edison's got these IR sensors, lovely. What's the suppression? What's the suppression from that? You get an alert, alarm goes off, you know there's gonna, there's a heat problem out there. What are you gonna do? Does anyone say, okay, we're gonna respond to engines up there, we're gonna throw the helicopter out there, we're gonna get people on the ground, take a look at it? You never followed through and asked any questions. We now live in foothill crematoria because of this new rating. Doesn't take into account any of the easements, any of the setbacks, any of the fuel mon that's been done that cost the HOA thousands of dollars. None of that was taken into consideration. You didn't push back. You voted five to nothing without any pushback. You can make protests on these things. You are allowed to do that. It takes a while, but you can push back. Mr. Tatlin there is on the Orange County Board. You knew this was coming down the pipeline. Why didn't you say something? Why didn't you get this out earlier and get some conversation going to the people that understand what's going on out there? We're not asking for miracles. We're asking for some possible solutions. I have some solutions I'd like to discuss. Like I said before, not in this forum. This is somewhere else. It's a face-to-face conversation, not where I talk, you say nothing, fire department talks, we can't interject or anything. That's not the way it's done. You need to interact with people. You need to interact with people to find out what's happening on the ground. What are we doing? You say, oh, we're going to just do this on science. Sometimes brute force action works. And the science so far is not working in that canyon. You've got an overgrown situation, you've got county land, you've got Foothill Ranch responsibilities, but you still have the same problem every year. The association does with the fuel mod, we get a fire that comes through, a lot of the houses get destroyed, year and year again. And it's like, oh, we need more fuel mod, you need more vegetation comeback, you know, and it's like, that's a constant thing. So when we do all these things, there's nothing taken into consideration of the work that's done. It's just across the board, you're living in Crematoria. So I want you to ponder on this for a little bit. I've asked to interface with one of you, or all of you, the Houstafire Department, on some ideas that I have. I'd like to get that fulfilled. Either you're going to listen to me, or you're just going to blow me off. I'm hoping for the latter, that you're going to listen to me and sit down and have a face-to-face. I think it's worthwhile for you guys and for the community. That's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
And will you be getting back with me?
Yeah, we can have a dialogue back and forth, but...
Do I get a picture of you together?
No, you're done, thank you.
No photograph?
But you're done, and the fact is, but I would like to suggest that you make an appointment with Orange County Fire Authority, they're our fire specialists. And so, we're not going to start a dialogue now, so keep them just giving you a suggestion because we're council members. I've got a former deputy sheriff here, he's not used to pulling a hose and fighting fires, but the guys in the dark blue, one of the finest fire departments in the nation...
I know, I'm a county firefighter.
Is our guy.
I'm a county firefighter, so I realize that.
And I'd like to correct you on a thing, we've never had a loss of a structure in Lake Forest. And we've had fires numerous years that came to the back walls of Portola Hills and Foothill Ranch, and it was the hard work and skill of Orange County Fire Authority that's kept those houses safe.
Yes.
So if you have a suggestion, take it up with Fire Authority because you're singing to the wrong people here because we don't do fire. The fact is, we count on Orange County Fire Authority to take care of the fire and keep our residents safe, just like I am not going to stop a bank robber. We have Orange County Sheriff Department, which is one of the best departments in the nation, and they take care of our law enforcement. So, you know, if you have a comment, which you might have great suggestions, bring it with Orange County Fire Authority, and they'll be happy to talk to you because they're the ones.
I have done that. I wanted to get the council involved in this stuff.
Thank you for your comment.
I know you can't...
That was my suggestion, we're not, we're done.
Just for a second.
We're done, we're done.
But you're not listening.
No, I'm not, we're done. You had your time, and you're done. Thank you.
Can we have a next, item number 14?
Yes, Mayor. Item 14 is a Ward of Contract for Civic Center Custodial and Janitorial Services, and the public commenter for that is Andrew O'Connor.
There's a lot of dancing going on here tonight, I just can't believe it. He's complaining about me, you know, telling me, then don't put your wife or your daughter on your campaign cards and mail them out to the public, okay? You know, you can't play both sides. And you, you just played both sides with him. One, last week, you got your arms wrapped around the Fire Authority, and now you don't have nothing to do with them.
Mayor, can I hear you strike himself?
It's your time, and we're on custodial and janitorial services here for the City Council.
Well, another contract we're entering into is going to cost us almost $400,000 a year. So you put that with all the other ones, that's why this facility is costing us over $1 million a year. If you guys looked at that or thought about it, janitorial service for this complex costs us $400,000 a year. I looked at the scope of work, and I thought I was looking at Kaiser Permanente Hospital, the way you're cleaning this thing. I think your scope of work is way too high. You're asking to do too much cleaning in a facility that's not used that much, okay? Granted, you've got your administration over here, 60 people, okay? I've worked in offices with 60 people. All is expected, vacuum the carpet, take out the trash, clean up the restroom, that's it. But I look at all the scope of work, which I know none of you have looked at, it looks like you're cleaning a hospital. What you expect to have done in here daily in rooms that aren't even done is ludicrous. Actually, it's stupid. And I hope when I tell you it costs us $400,000 a year, you guys would wake up. But it doesn't, you know? Did any of you guys look at the scope of work, Tedimer? Did you look, I look at your board, you know? You look at any of this? High and low dusting, horizontal, vertical blinds, waste recups will be emptied and cleaned, fighting, you know, that makes sense. That's about it. But all the stuff that you have on here, it's too much. It's too many hours. I don't know who put this scope of work together, but it's too much for what needs to be done for this simple building, for 60 people in the senior center. What do you have to do in here? Looks pretty good to me. By the way, see, Mayor, are we going to tear this carpet up? Is that still your plans? Because you never got back to me because it was in a Kidder Matthews proposal, that we're going to tear up this beautiful carpet, there's nothing wrong with it. Is that still in the plans? And Councilman Servo, just go back, watch the video again, and I made my point. I made my point clear. You don't know what's going on. You don't know what's going on.
Thank you for your comments. And before we move on with the rest of the consent calendar, I have a warrant registered. There are warrants on the register for the County of Orange. I'm an employee with the County of Orange, but I do not work for the department that generated these warrants. The department of, the County of Orange is a public agent, because I work, do not work for the department, is the question, I have determined that I have a non-interest in the warrants, and I will vote on the items. Benjamin, you have one?
No.
Mayor, I want to move items two, three, four, and 14.
I'll second that.
Okay, then we're going to call the vote. Thank you.
And that motion passes.
Thank you, Council. That brings us to discussion items, action items 16 and 17. Madam Clerk, please read the title of item number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. The title of item 16 is Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce Contractual Services Agreement.
This is going to be, Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call up Adrian Grahava, our Economic Development and Housing Manager, to give us an overview of the proposed Chamber of Commerce agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The item before you for consideration is the Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce Agreement. The Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce began its service to the business community in 2010. The chamber is a professional organization committed to promoting and supporting its member businesses in the surrounding community. The chamber consistently meets or exceeds its obligations in its agreements, providing excellent service to the city and business community in support of economic development The agreement requires the chamber to implement specific programs and events to assist with the city's business development and attraction goals. The funding the city provides is intended to cover expenses associated with business events and seminars. In fiscal year 2024-25, the chamber hosted 24 grand opening ribbon-cutting celebrations, co-sponsored 10 events, and hosted Beer and Wine Gardens at the concerts in the parks, Symphony in the Park, and the annual tree lighting ceremony. The chamber also co-hosted the return of the Taste of Lake Forest, and they marketed and promoted the Community Gift Card Program. The Ad-Hoc Committee met in April to discuss the chamber proposal. It discussed the current fiscal year events, including this year's State of the City, which received overwhelmingly positive feedback. The committee recommends entering into a two-year agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. A two-year agreement would reduce city and chamber staff time for annual preparation and renewal of proposals and agreements. Edwin aligned the proposed agreement with the city's two-year budget cycle, effectively allowing greater efficiency and continuity in planning and execution of events. The proposed agreement contains the same scope of services as our current agreement. Signature events that have become staples in the agreement include the Business Appreciation Luncheon, Business Seminar and Expo, the Career Fair, and Meet the Mayor State of the City. I've also included the Taste of Lake Forest on this slide, although it's not part of the standard agreement. The Taste is a large community event co-hosted by the Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce, and I'm excited to announce that this year's Taste is returning on Friday, August 15th at Heritage Hill Historical Park. Tickets are $50 and will be available starting in July. Staff will return to a future city council meeting with additional details to share. The total proposed agreement is not to exceed $88,461.45. $42,735 are for services for fiscal year 2025-26, and a CPI adjustment for fiscal year 2026-27. At this time, staff recommends the city council approve the proposed contractual services agreement with the Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce for fiscal years 2025-26 and 2026-27. Staff also recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest the contractual services agreement between the city and the chamber. Steve Smith, President of the Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce, and I are available to answer any questions the city council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do have one public commenter, and that is Steve Smith.
Okay. Mr. President, please step to the mic.
Good evening, I'm Steve Smith. I am a local business owner and resident of Lake Forest for 33 years now, and I also volunteer as the board chairman for the Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. The CEO does way more than I do. Anyway, I just wanted to let you all know that since our inception in 2010, we have enjoyed a very good relationship with the city. In fact, one that is basically looked at favorably by most other cities in South County. Last year alone, between city-sponsored events and chamber-sponsored events, we conducted 72 for that year, and we are on track this year to do about the same. And a lot of that goes to our CEO, Mary Visconti, who has many great connections and volunteer support that enable us to be able to provide the support that the city needs and enjoys. So I appreciate you guys looking at this contract before you. A two-year contract will give us way more opportunities to plan and successfully schedule all of the events that are coming our way, and it gives us an opportunity to find the right match in terms of vendors so that we can stay within our budget. And as Adrian said, I will be available for any comments that you might have or questions you might have, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that conclude public comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Mayor Protem Pekinio.
So I don't have any questions for you, Adrian. I do, I do appreciate that the chamber, really all they asked for was the CPI adjustments, which was great, and I think this chamber does an outstanding job. Mary is pretty much the James Brown of the Chamber of Commerce community because she does a whole lot, and she puts her heart and soul into it, and I really like going to her events, so it's our pleasure. And I don't know if my colleagues are going to say anything, but I want to move this motion, or I want to make, move this item.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a motion, and...
Second.
That was second, but I do have a comment, too. And where's the chair? Chairman, it's good, you stay right there, don't run up. I just want to say, you guys at the chamber, along with Mary, are an excellent team in helping to promote and be, you know, I like to say that when we have a new business opening up, it's sometimes the most nerve-wracking time a business will have because they're opening up and they're venturing into a new world. And the fact is, the chamber, along with their ambassadors, along with all of us as councilmen, when we can make it, are there to cheer them on. And so, it's trying times out there for small businesses, and small businesses are the backbone of our city. So the fact is that, I just want to say, thank you, Steve, and thank you to Mary and your whole staff. I want to say, thank you to, I feel the best economic stimulus, economic development director in the County of Orange, Adrian, thank you. Because, you know, when we're trying to get new businesses to open up, sometimes they're vacant for a while, but we're trying to get a good fit, and the fact is, we, along with the property manager, are marketing that product. We actually do, they take, city, Adrian, takes a lot of calls from people that are interested in property in Lake Forest, and he was able to direct them to different locations. And so, you know, sometimes it's not a match made in heaven, but sometimes it is. And the fact is, Lake Forest is a great place to live, work, and play. I want to say thank you to you both and the Chamber of Lake Forest. Thank you. And it was a great year to be mayor because we had a great State of the City or Meet the Mayor event. Thank you for all your hard work. And so, we have a first and a second on the floor, and I'll call for that vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
I never doubted it. Madam City Clerk, please read the title of number, item number 17.
Yes, the title of item 17 is Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program Five-Year Review.
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to introduce Tran Tran, our world-famous transportation manager. He's going to give you an overview of the Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program Five-Year Review.
I got amazed by that spike tear coming down the aisle, I'm thinking, oh, what's this? It's coming down my way. Tran, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I like my hairstyles to change it up so you guys make sure that you remember the name.
Yeah, I didn't recognize you.
But thank you, City Manager Rose, and thank you for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'll be going over the five-year review of the Lake Forest Transportation Mitigation Program, which I'll be referring to as LIFTM throughout this evening. And if we could work this, perfect. The LIFTM program was established back in 2008, and the program itself was a way to allow for developers to pay into a fund which the city would ultimately use to improve impacted intersections that was identified by the traffic study. This program is updated every five years or so, and those updates review any potential land use updates, as well as reassessment of traffic models and roadway networks, and adjustments of LIFTM project costs and associated fee schedules. So far, the LIFTM program has completed seven improvement projects. We have, we're going through four projects that are under construction, actively under construction right now. One project in design that is Irvine-led, three remaining projects that's in the planning and pre-construction phase, and one project to be considered for removal that I'll get into a little bit more tonight. In summary, the 2024 LIFTM Program Five-Year Review identified the need to revise the program costs. The total program or improvement cost is $14.67 million. We have collected $12.15 million, leaving us with $2.52 million in remaining unpaid costs, which the fees will be distributed amongst the remaining housing units. In addition, the five-year review identified alternative secondary, or what I'll phrase as secondary intersection improvements at four intersections listed here that meets the city's standard level of service and would be a cheaper alternative to be implemented due to various reasons, again, I'll get into in the next few slides. So getting into the intersections itself, the first one is Los Alisos Boulevard and Rockfield Boulevard. The original LIFTM program identified that there is a need for a dedicated right-turn pocket. So, if you could see here, if we were to implement a dedicated right-turn pocket, we would need to widen the roadway and then push the curb back, represented in this shape right here. So if we were to push that curb back and add the sidewalk and public utility use in the, in the general public right-of-way, you could see that there's a possibility of some, or if not all, of a right-of-way take of those four homes that you see right there. So that would be a major impact to the community. So staff talked to our consultants and identified an alternative or secondary improvement, which is shown here. This is representative of a re-striping of Los Alisos Boulevard to accommodate what we call a de facto right-turn lane, which is an extra wide lane that is about 19 feet wide to allow for through-traffic to simultaneously be in the same area as the right turners that's going to squeeze by to the right. So that is one of the alternatives for this evening. Next is Lake Forest Drive and Rockfield Boulevard. This is a change from the existing striping that you see here, or existing layout that you see on Rockfield. And so, what is being proposed in the original accommodation for the LIFTM program is to replace that number-one-through lane with a shared left-through lane. And when you do this, this unfortunately puts the... And when you do this, this unfortunately puts this signal to be required to operate the signal at a split-phase operation. What that means is that this unfortunately will have to be getting a green light one at a time, and that could be very inefficient in regards to traffic operations. What makes it worse is that it's right up against the I-5 freeway, so staff, again, talked to our consultants to see if there's an alternative improvement, and what we came up with is implementing a right-turn overlap, which is in the southeast corner of this intersection that will allow for right-turn movements to go on green while left-turn movements on Lake Forest is occurring at the same time. That's a more efficient way to move traffic and allows me to have some flexibility with signal timing and operations at this intersection, because it's quite critical that this intersection flows well due to the vicinity of the I-5 freeway. Next is the intersection on the other side. This is actually in the city of Laguna Hills, as well as the city of Irvine. This intersection is Lake Forest Drive and the I-5 off-ramp, also Avenida de la Carlada. So the existing layout that you see here in the blue is what you see. The original LIFTM program replaced the shared left-through to a third left-turn lane and added a additional through lane on the off-ramp, which requires quite a bit of widening and maybe interchange improvements due to the fact that you're adding some width to that off-ramp. In addition to that, on Avenida de la Carlada, you're adding a additional left-turn lane. So with all that, that could be quite extensive and a complex, dealing with multiple agencies and including Caltrans with their encroachment permit due to the proximity to the interchange. With that, we took another look at it to see if there's another alternative that would provide similar level of service. What we came up with was that you could have or maintain the same level of service if you were just simply to do a signing and striping change, which is to change the center lane of Avenida de la Carlada to not a right-turn pocket, but change that to a shared left-right, and that would be more cost-effective and allow us to operate that intersection more appropriately. And last, like I alluded to in the previous slides, Bake Park and Rockfield Boulevard, we're proposing tonight to remove this from the LIFTM program. This is actually in the city of Irvine completely, and so the existing layout is what you see here. The original proposal of the LIFTM program is to replace the number-one lane with a third left-turn lane and remove the free right and make it a shared-through right. And the reason we're removing this is we've checked with the city of Irvine's Traffic Modeling Group, as well as ours, to see whether or not it meets the current level of service as is, and it does. And so we're happy to remove that, as it's, at this point, it's considered a necessary improvement. All that is to be said that in the program itself, we were able to have a cost reduction in the amount of approximately six to nine million dollars with those projects. So staff here is here tonight for council to approve the alternative improvements for the three intersections, remove Bake Parkway and Rockfield Boulevard, an improvement project, approve the updated cost assessments and fee schedule, and approve the 2024 LIFTM five-year update. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
We'll bring back to you, do we have any public comments for...
We do, Mayor. We have one public commenter, and that is Andrew O'Connor.
Just looking at me and especially the Lake Forest and Rockfield intersection, and Pecano about six months ago says, man, you did a good job making that lane right. It's all good. Everything's good. He said that, remember that, Pecano? No, he's coming back and saying, no, we got to reconstruct. It doesn't work. So why the hell do we spend all this money on these intersections, consultants and all that, and he's coming back saying, well, we got to do, we got to do that? I'll go back and find it. You said it, that, oh, man, you did it because it had to do with the Shell gas station, getting out and all that, and you're like, oh, you did a good job. Now he's saying we got to reconfigure it. Doesn't make any sense. We got three intersections I reported him, he doesn't call me back on, where, you know, you have intersection with the lights for pedestrians. We got three of them. One's in your district, Tedamer, one's in yours, you, one's in your servo, and he still hasn't gotten back to me, and it's haven't been fixed. Why is that, Tran? You know what I'm talking about? Still not working. Lake Forest at Dimension, North Point at Bake, Aspen at Lake Forest. Write them down. You go home tonight and check them out yourself. They're not working. I sent a request, signed it him. Oh, yeah, I'm working on it. I sent it to the contractor. Not working. We pay this guy almost $200,000 a year. Here's another question, and I've said this before, and Tedamer knows it because he's on the OCTA board. When are you guys going to address the elephant in the room? When's the decision on the El Toro Road exit, Southbound I-5? What's it going to be? What's Caltrans decided? They doing a flyover or what? Because the traffic's bunching up, bunching up, bunching up. You guys are going to approve the Chase Building? You're going to turn into hotel and apartments and all that? You're going to knock down that? You're going to get more traffic at that highly congested intersection? And you got this LFTM, and it's not even on the agenda? We're not even talking about the El Toro Road, I-5 Southbound exit? And you're the traffic engineer? Are you talking to anybody on this?
Please direct your comments to us.
Well, he came up after the presentation. He's the man. You're on the board, Tedamer. You work for the supervisor, Don Wagner. You're all friends of Laguna Hills. We just did a solid waste contract. What the hell's going on? Because traffic's backing up, but you go and read, OCTA says, oh, man, this measure I'm working really great. Traffic's flowing. I told you before, from Britzel Street to 605, that improvement plan, they're still bumper-to-bumper, Southbound in the morning and Northbound in the afternoon. Yeah, your nineteen-dollar an hour, nineteen-dollar toll lanes are working really good. County's really happy about that, but those poor sons of bitches who can't afford nineteen dollars are still stuck in traffic after we spent billions of dollars.
Thank you for your comments. And Tran, if you want to come back up, council, do we have any comments? No?
Yeah, I actually have one. You know, Tran, when you were coming up, I thought maybe you were a K-pop star. I was going to take a picture for you, for my daughter. But hey, all seriousness, the LIFTM funds are used to improve traffic flow, and it's about getting home to our families quicker, easier, and you've been doing a great job. You want to explain the twelve million dollars we've got paid for already for the upcoming improvements, but then we have two, where's that money come from? Because people don't realize, and I'd like you to explain that.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. And so that's a great question. This program was developed back, like I said, in 2008 with participating developers. And so most of the developments were residential developments in the general area that did a cumulative traffic study to identify traffic impacts throughout the entire city. And those traffic studies were, showed needs in our proposed outlier years or build-out years that required some widening or some improvements, because the level of service is going to decrease over time due to those developments, and all these projects is to mitigate that. And so that is put on the onus of the city to actually implement those for future, or for current year and future year. And so a lot of the projects, like I said, I think we, I pointed out, there are seven completed projects already for under construction, and again, I apologize for any disruption while we do this, but it is going to help you in the long term. Right now, you could see Lake Forest and Dronimal being constructed as we speak. We are starting to break ground in Bake and Tribuco, and so we're doing a little investigation work, but we're looking forward to finishing these projects out. We're very close to the finish line, and we're looking forward to just finishing that out for the developers, as well as for the community here at the city.
That's a great answer. And so you see that the housing complex we have, the Meadows or Portola, or these other projects we have coming into the city of Lake Forest, that LIFTM funds come from development fees when they get permits pulled, and the fact that this helps, goes to help all of our city. And so the fact is, we are working on that I-5 freeway off-ramp, but we're working with Caltrans and OCTA and the other cities. That's something that's coming up, but in the city, we're doing a great job, and I want to say thank you for the wonderful traffic flow that we have, because I actually feel it's pretty darn good, especially when I get to Irvine and see how bad it is. I thank you for the great job you do in Lake Forest. And do we have any other comments? I'll take a motion in a second.
Motion to prove.
I'll second.
Mayor Protem, second in that. I call it for your vote. Thank you.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So that brings us to the City Manager's report. Sorry for being awestruck by our new K-pop star here in Lake Forest.
All right, it could have happened to anyone. I understand. I have nothing further this evening.
Oh, thank you. So that brings me to Councilmember Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, we're part of the ACCOC, the Associated Cities of California for Orange County, and we had the opportunity to attend from a nomination that we had for an award based on the contract we worked with our Ad-Hoc Committee and our friends over Laguna Hills for the waste hauling contract. So we were able to attend that at the Nixon Library, which is an incredible facility. If you've never been there before, I'd encourage you to go and take a tour. It's absolutely a gorgeous facility and really honors our president's service there. But we were able to be nominated for that. We didn't win that particular award, but the fact that we were just nominated was an honor in itself. Thank you.
Okay, that gets to Councilman Tedamer.
Thank you. I also attended the ACCOC event. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman, you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attend ACCOC event. That's it. No more comments.
Okay. Mayor Protem Pecano, sorry.
I have two things. One, first, I'd like to bring, ask for consent to bring up an item that the Planning Commission voted on a couple of weeks ago, reference massage parlors, and Madam Assistant City Attorney, can you let me know what kind of consent I need?
Absolutely. Mayor and council, I believe that the Mayor Protem is referring to an item that went to Planning Commission on June 5th, 2025, that was Consideration of Use Permit 11245754, which was to establish a massage establishment at 23811 Bridger Road, Unit 100. I want to note that there is a section in the Lake Forest Municipal Code 204125 that does allow city council members as a body to call up an item for review, so basically taking that Planning Commission item and bringing it to the City Council for consideration. One of the relevant points that I would like to point out is that code section says that when there is that request for a call-up, quote, "No argument or other explanation should be offered by the members calling for review," end quote. So again, this is a request by the Mayor Protem to call up that item, but this is just a request for consensus, to put it on the future agenda.
And how many people do I need?
A simple majority.
I'm supportive. Perfect. And the other thing I have is, I didn't go to the ACCOC event, but I had another event that I was a part of. I was the officiant at a wedding here at the Civic Center for Taylor and Christian, and they asked me to do it, and I had the honor of doing it, and it was a beautiful ceremony, and the folks that worked for you, Sean, over here in the community center, did an outstanding job. So Taylor and Christian, best of luck in your marriage, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, it's been a few weeks, but I just, there's never enough time for me to give a shout-out to our Orange County Sheriff Department, because I was at the Medal of Valor Award Ceremony in Anaheim, and I want to say congratulations to those that, from Lake Forest, that were representative of us and got awards, but the fact is that we do have one of the finest law enforcement agencies in the nation. And then I was at the Best and Bravest a few weeks ago. Unfortunately, both those council meetings after that, I had to leave early, but I wanted to give a shout-out to the Orange County Fire Authority and the Orange County Sheriff Department, which we owe so much for our safety here in Lake Forest, and so, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for your department. You guys do great work for us, and we feel, we do feel it, and thank you. I, too, was at the ACCOC event, and it was a wonderful event, and I want to say that we have, on June 28th, we have our multicultural festival coming up, and that will be at the sports park, I think, or campus here. Campus here. And so mark your calendars for the Second Annual Festival, where we have booths and displays from all around the world, and so that was always, that was a big hit last year, the first, and it's supposed to be better and improved. And so come out and see it. And with that, I have nothing further. Thank you, and I'll close this meeting.